Yes, one, two, three. Good evening and welcome to Rainier Avenue Radio. I am Tony B. And tonight we bring you another important event. Our 2025 Community Election Connection is on. Make some noise, please. Thirty-one days. It doesn't have to end at thirty-one days. That was just kind of an arbitrary figure that kind of makes sense. But every one of these thirty-one days, we are going to be hyper focusing on something that has to do with the election during this season. Folks say, well, this isn't a presidential election. It's not even a midterm election. People don't care. I can say to you that, you know, our audience that we're most thinking about is this audience that is viewing us on streaming, the audience that is listening to us on streaming, the audience. So we have a nice crowd in here tonight as well. Again, we are Rainier Avenue Radio, and this thirty-one days is powered by the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. Thank you to the Urban League. Tonight's program features the Seattle City Council Position Nine debate. This is one of the most important races in our city because position nine is a citywide position. It's a citywide seat. The person elected will represent all of Seattle, all of Seattle. That this will help with decisions that affect and impact housing, public safety, transportation, climate, and the overall direction of our community. At Rainier Avenue Radio, our mission is to make sure that you have access to clear information and open dialogue. And through our partnership with the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, we are committed to ensure equity, accountability, and opportunity. And these are all things that are central to the conversation. Now, before we begin, here are the rules for tonight's debate. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening statements. Candidates will then answer questions posed by each of our moderators. Each of you will have sixty seconds respond. There'll be an optional thirty-second rebuttal. And I will guide this process all the way. At the conclusion of the debate, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. We ask all participants to respect the time limits. We ask our audience to listen attentively and respectfully as we provide this platform. Let's get started. I want to introduce our moderators. For tonight, our moderator, the closest to me, and I'll just start right there, is Jen A. Bean, who is a specialist in acupuncture and...
Hormone nutrition?
Hormone nutrition, and is also the owner of Health Discovery Acupuncture and Nutrition. And also Mr. Juan Coto, who is the Director of Governor Affairs, the Budwork Northwest, and does a show on Rainier Avenue Radio, also does sports on Rainier Avenue Radio as well. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, round the clock. So our moderators, if you hear and ask questions of our candidates, and again, our candidates are the incumbent Sarah Nelson and Deion Foster. So I wanted to get all of that out of the way so that we can get started.
May I ask you one thing?
Go ahead.
You know, I'm a statesman. I've run for office several times, and I realize that politicians actually win elections. So I just want to say, having said that, Mr. B., I just want to say, and you did such a nice job introducing them, but this is one of the most courageous things, and we're seeing that in our public discourse. And I've had a chance to work with both of them. They both appeared on a show that I do here on Rainier Avenue Radio. And I just want to say thank you, both of you, for your courage in doing this. Thank you for serving our community, and we're looking forward to having a wonderful conversation. And I would ask that the audience, please, let's be respectful to everyone who's up here because they are...
All right, Juan.
Thank you.
Well, that's what I'm going to be doing. I'm going to be getting people off the mic so we can stay on time.
Thank you, Mr. B.
We can take advantage of the time that we do have here because we did get started late. And so we did not flip a coin. So I'm going to arbitrarily, Sarah, give you the opportunity to have opening statement first. And then, so Deion, I'm going to let you decide for closing statement. Would you like to go first or would you like to go last for closing statement?
I'll go last.
You'll go last. Okay. So just arbitrary. Jen, you're going to ask the first question. And I would like this, this is your timekeeper down here. Your timekeeper will show you a sign that says thirty seconds, so that you know you have thirty seconds left. And then she'll show you a sign that says you have ten seconds. And then if you go past the ten seconds, it will stop. And it's annoying sound, yes, but it means stop. You're saying stop. So we're going to get started. And Jen, your first question for the moderators, and this question in the... Oh, sorry. We're going to start with opening statements. And Sarah, you have two minutes for your opening statement. And you are now on the clock.
All right. Hello, everyone. I am Sarah Nelson, a thirty-five-year Seattle resident, lifelong Democrat, wife, mother, small business owner, and I'm running for reelection to build on the progress that we have made and also to protect this city against the external threat that is Donald Trump. I am the candidate with experience taking on tough fights and winning. So, for example, we've got a housing affordability crisis, and I took on the establishment to bring five hundred units of union-built workforce housing in the Stadium District. I'm transforming permitting to make housing cheaper and easier to build, and I'm constantly pushing the executive to get the millions of dollars the council allocated for affordable housing out the door faster, or simply just pay people's rent so they don't get homeless in the first place. You know, when I started this job, officers were leaving the city in droves, and gun violence overdoses and crime against small businesses was on the rise, and 911's response times were slowing. And so to fix that, I got hiring bonuses pushed through and a majority defund council, and I transformed the way the city processes SPD applications. But what I'm most proud at is leading the charge on getting treatment at the center of the city's agenda, because addiction is fueling both our chronic homelessness and our public safety crises. These are some examples of the ways that I've taken on the status quo, and I'm not stopping there. We need somebody who's going to fight hard for the city. This is not the time for training wheels, not the time for a sharp learning curve. We need someone who can hit the ground immediately and run to protect you and our city.
Thank you. And I will be throwing to both of you, it was candidate Nelson and candidate Foster. Just that you were candidate Foster, you have two minutes for your opening statement, and you are now on the clock.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deion Foster, and I'm so excited to be here running for Seattle City Council Position Nine. I am new to running for office, but I have been a fighter my entire life, and I'm excited to bring that spirit to council. Growing up, I worked two jobs in high school to help my family pay bills. I watched my mom work tirelessly to make ends meet and struggle at home. And I knew then that what I wanted to do was build a career fighting to make people's lives better, and I am proud that I have done that. I have fought, I went from being a teen who paid bills when our electricity got cut off, to working as a senior advisor in Seattle Public Utilities, which is one of the largest parts of our city government, ensuring that we can deliver affordable utility services to working families like mine. I was on Apple Health when I had my son, and I struggled to find affordable childcare. And then I have spent my career fighting for investments in childcare, early education, and schools, including when I was Executive Director of Washington Progress Alliance, and we helped pass and defend and defend and defend our state's capital gains tax, which puts millions of dollars into our communities, including right here in South Seattle. I've also stood alongside labor unions and community groups to make sure that we protect gig worker minimum wage standards and that we are taking care of our communities and our frontline workers. I've defended our state's Climate Commitment Act and the billions of dollars that go into reducing pollution so that we can have clean air and healthy water for our kids who can have a safe place to live. But I got into this race because I love this city and I want it to be affordable. I'm raising my son here in South Seattle and Rainier Beach, and I want him to be able to grow up and stay here and not be worried about being displaced from his community. I want him to be able to cross the street and catch the bus without worrying about traffic safety, which so many of us have to contend with here on Rainier. And I'm running for council so that I can bring a fighting voice for things like progressive revenue, for making sure that people can have their voices heard when they show up at City Hall. I'm really proud to have the support of many of our local elected leaders, and I hope to earn yours as well. Thank you.
My last question. Timekeeper, do you have a sharpie? Because I can't really see the...
Okay. Let's see if we can get that. And let's go ahead, and we're going to let our moderators act this conversation for tonight's debate. Again, Jen A. Bean and Juan Coto, just both of you, the questions should not be longer than the answer. Trying to hear from the candidates, all right? Jen, would you get started and direct your first question to both candidates, but initially, candidate Nelson, you will have the opportunity to answer first this time.
Okay. So, on the topic of public safety and police accountability, Seattle has struggled to balance public safety with public or with police reform. What is your plan for ensuring communities feel both safe and respected?
One minute.
I go back to what Carmen Best said when she said that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can have accountability, and then we can also ensure that we've got enough officers around the city to ensure for better public safety. I sit on the committee that is negotiating new accountability measures in this next contract. I can't really talk much about that, but it's taken a while because we are also negotiating to allow non-uniformed officers to respond to people with crises. Because I believe that public safety is not just hiring more cops, it's also getting at the root of the problem that's driving the problems we're seeing. And for that, we need to partner with a lot of our community organizations, because it takes both sides.
And candidate Foster, would you like the question repeated or are you good?
Yeah, I was honored to get, I was glad I got here early tonight so I could hear a little bit from the Community Police Commission, because it's really clear that there are, that people's voices are not being heard on council, right? That commission was talking about making recommendations to council that have been discounted and not acted on. So for one, I would start with making sure that on council, when I'm making decisions and taking those recommendations that come from those advisory bodies seriously. It's also very clear to me that when we're thinking about safety and respect, yes, it's clear that we need to hire more officers. I've talked to lots of my neighbors who have said, I've called 911, and I've had to wait too long for a response. That should not be the case. That should not be the case anywhere in the city. But let's also be clear, we currently have twelve people who are serving the entire city through the Care Department. I think it's really important that we are working on expanding the Care Department so that people can get a fast response, and that we are decoupling that response from SPD so that those folks are freer to do their jobs and they can do them more effectively.
Well, yeah, there's nothing for rebuttal. There you go. Thirty seconds for rebuttal.
This is just a small detail, but council did expand the original number of care responders. So I do believe that it's, we're in the twenties by now, and they're operating over in different parts of the city. But it's not enough. And if that's your point, I take that, because we do have to have an alternative to dealing with people in crisis, because a uniform response sometimes makes the program worse. But accountability takes a long time to negotiate, and there will be another, you know, contract announcement coming soon. And so we'll see how the Community Police Commission feels about that.
And time, candidate Foster, you have thirty seconds for rebuttal.
Sure. So I'll again underscore the need to make sure that we are decoupling so that those responders can go out and do their jobs. One of the things that I did when I started running for office was go out and do a ride along with the Care Department, and I got to ask them lots of questions about what a day in their life is like, and watch them help and support people navigate through our system. And it's really important that we have more folks. While there are more people in the department, there are twelve people who are out on the streets. So I believe there's twenty-four when you start to count the people who are staffing the department, the admin and other people.
And time, and Juan Coto, your question initially will be directed to candidate Nelson.
Candidate Nelson, fentanyl and public use enforcement. Seattle continues to struggle with open-air drug use and overdoses. Where do you draw the line between enforcement and diversion? And what changes, if any, to Seattle's drug use public consumption policy would you push in 2026?
Candidate Nelson, you have one minute. You're on the clock.
I sponsored the legislation to conform to state law, making public use and possession a gross misdemeanor. That almost passed until one of the council's council members flip-flopped, and then we have another, and so the mayor passed down another law that has a difficult clause to it, which means that the officer has to perceive a threat of harm to others. That then inserts some bias in the minds of the officers and makes it harder to really ultimately get people into treatment, because the goal is not arresting people to take them to jail. The goal is to present a choice and get people into treatment.
Candidate Foster, you have one minute. Would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. You know, so I recently, when I was out campaigning, I witnessed somebody have an overdose, and we needed to find Narcan for them. We needed to call police and fire to come out. And it's a terrifying experience, and it's something that is happening too often across our city. And I want to also be clear, though, that that provision that's in the local ordinance that we, that was crafted in response to Blake, is intended to ensure that we are trying to get people into pre-diversion, and it is intended to ensure that we are focusing on getting people into treatment, not getting people into the criminal justice system. So I think that it's the right thing to do to make sure that we do have laws on the book that are clear about drug use. But I don't think we need to be reopening it, which I believe is what you were indicating in your remarks, to remove that clause, because I believe that's going to, that's going to, that was not the intended purpose.
Or rebuttal, yeah?
Yeah, just to clarify. Do I have a limit?
Okay, no, this is really fast. Thirty seconds, candidate Nelson, for rebuttal.
The state law that we conformed, that we were trying to conform to, does already require diversion services. So we were not trying to strip that part of the original or Mayor Heral's legislation out of that.
Would you like to use your thirty seconds for rebuttal?
No, we can move on.
You can go ahead. We'll move on. And Ms. Bean, next question for you, and this question will initially be directed towards candidate Foster, but both of them want this question.
Okay. So let's switch into housing and homelessness. What specific strategies do you support to reduce homelessness in Seattle? And do you favor expanding tiny house villages, sanctioned encampments, or permanent supportive housing? The last part is, how should Seattle balance the urgency of all of the visible homelessness with long-term affordable housing solutions?
All right, that's possible. Candidate Foster, you have one minute to solve that problem.
Thank you. Well, it's an important problem, and I'm glad that you brought up the different layers to it. So I will say that I want to be on council, a huge champion for expanding our network of tiny homes. We are about to have a tiny home village that opens up close to my house. I believe it's going to be on city-light property. When I'm out and I'm talking to folks, I actually got a chance to be at a meeting for that village that's about to come online. And I heard from folks who are in a tiny home village in another community, and what they said was so clear about the stability that it offers them to be able to lock their door at night and at the end of the day. The other thing that was incredibly clear was what neighbors' experience were from other tiny home villages. I heard folks say, I'm so happy to have this tiny home village as part of my community. I can go out. We're building relationships, and I want to fight for more of that on council, particularly looking at some of the vacant properties and parcels that the city has ownership over, so that we can partner to site some more of those facilities. I do support permanent supportive housing, and I think that we have a lot of urgency to make sure that we are solving homelessness. And that means that we need to put a focus on bringing people inside, not moving folks around the city.
Candidate Foster, would you like to...
Sure, repeat it. Okay, you ready? What specific strategies do you support to reduce homelessness in Seattle? Do you favor expanding tiny house villages, sanctioned encampments, or permanent supportive housing? And how should Seattle balance the urgency of all the visible homelessness with the long-term affordable housing solutions?
Candidate Nelson, you have one minute to solve this problem.
Okay, so I said before that I, when I ran, I wanted to make sure that what we're doing is working, and if it's not, do something different. And that is what we have to do. There's been all this infighting between the KCRHA, which I sit on the board of, and providers about what is the best thing to do. There was a recent study that was reported on in the Seattle Times that says the cities that are doing better, bringing people out from inside in, have increased the number of shelters at the expense of more permanent supportive housing that takes a really long time to build. And that's why, and I'm beginning to side on that, because we really have to get people out of the elements and into some shelter so that they can move on to something more permanent. But we have to help people who are living in just demoralizing and inhumane conditions outside.
Would you like to... candidate Foster?
Yeah. The thing I want to add to this is that, you know, permanent supportive housing is about sort of meeting people where they are but not leaving them there. There's a director of a local nonprofit that says that. I don't get to take credit for that. But what is important to see is that so many of those facilities are now working to co-locate treatment inside those housing facilities, so that you're giving somebody a place to go that is permanent and stable, and that they can also access treatment there. So that's why we absolutely have to keep up the work on expanding our permanent supportive housing.
And candidate Nelson, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I would really love to know those providers that are putting treatment in permanent supportive housing, because I have been calling for that for a very long time and actually have a budget item that did not get implemented this year, because we have to have everything in one place. We have to have housing and treatment, and also perhaps transportation to doctor's appointments and whatever meetings. So we have, right now, permanent supportive housing is often experienced as housing only, and that is wrong.
And that's all we got. We got to move on to the next question. Mr. Coto, next question. Your question is initially directed towards candidate Foster.
Candidate Foster, as Seattle finalizes its twenty-year growth plan, which three areas should take the most additional homes and why? What transit or school investments must accompany that growth?
Candidate Foster, you have one minute.
Okay. So I think you're asking for which three areas. I would argue that we have, you know, we have thirty new neighborhood centers that are in the comprehensive plan. I've been a vocal supporter of adding back in the eight neighborhood centers that were removed from the previous plan. So I don't think it's about one or two or three neighborhoods, but I think it's about making sure the entire city is working together. We are one of the fastest-growing cities in the country. We're now the fourth-fastest-growing city. So it's going to take that kind of expansion to make sure that we actually have both enough homes. But it's also key that through having enough homes, that's part of how we're also going to tackle our affordability crisis, so that we can see a little bit more competition in the market, and that's got to be part of that. I believe the second, can you repeat the second part of your question? Schools? Yeah, I think that, you know, the thing that is that, you know, housing goes hand-in-hand with schools. Many parents, as folks know, we're looking at potential school closures previously. When we're able to have more housing, more apartments, more affordable housing around the city, that's going to be one of the ways that we can ensure families can stay in the city, and that's going to make sure there's students to go to school here.
And time, candidate Nelson. Would you like the question repeated or...
I remembered. The comp plan has been before us for a really long time, and so it's extremely complex. And I'll say, first of all, that I am, that there are district representatives that are more in touch on a constant basis with what their constituencies need. And there, and for example, Councilmember Hollingsworth is looking to perhaps modify the neighborhood center boundaries, because in some areas, they're concerned about more housing, increasing the land value, and also displacing current residents. So it's all very complex, and it really does depend on the particular neighborhood. But I start with, we've got a crisis, we need more supply, and it, everything depends on how it's done.
And candidate Foster, you want to...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think one of the things I'd like to note, and part of the reason I'm a big proponent of adding back in those eight neighborhood centers, is I live here in Rainier Beach, and I see the challenges with displacement. And I think that unless we have enough places and enough locations around the city, then we continue to see a lot of pressure in low-income, working-class neighborhoods like mine, which is resilient and beautiful, like this room tonight. But we have to make sure that we are diversifying the areas around the city where we are going to build housing.
I think that that is what I agree with also, but I am privileging the conversations and the words that the communities, not just the white, single-family homeowners, but the people that are living with increased density and the conversations that they have had with their council members. And so, yes, more housing everywhere. It's possible that maybe more of that density should happen north of the Ship Canal and more than south. But again, we will see everybody's amendments this coming week.
You're listening to Rainier Avenue Radio World, and we are presenting the Community Election Connection. We are just getting started today. Off to a great start. This is a debate for Seattle City Council Position Nine, which is a citywide position and one of the most important elections for a candidate that you are going to have this year. And don't forget, it's local elections that have the most impact on you. Jen, next question.
Who are we directing this one to first?
This question is initially directed to candidate Nelson.
All right. Candidate Nelson. Seattle has pledged to meet ambitious climate goals. How will you ensure the city delivers on them?
One minute.
That is a topic that has unfortunately not been at the center of this administration and this council for a long time. First of all, I believe that environmental justice and protecting the climate revolves around housing. More supply so that people can live in town and not have to drive to and from work. That is a key environmental justice concern for me. And then, you know, I was working on expanding the network for EV chargers. There are piecemeal policies that we have got to implement, but we really do have to think about what is hurting our low-income communities, people of color who have too often been pushed into the neighborhoods or the areas where the amenities are low and the environmental impacts are deleterious. And so that should be framing our strategy going forward.
Candidate Foster, would you like the question repeated?
No, I think that it's, you know, we have to meet our climate goals. It's critical. We know that we're not going to get help from the federal administration. We're getting pulled out of everything left and right at that level. You know, I was a founding member of the Community Partner Steering Committee, which led to the creation of an Equity and Environment Agenda for the city. One of the things that we have to recognize is we got to, thank you, we have to get our transportation investments done well so that people have opportunities that are functioning for them, so that they can actually get out of their car and take their bus, take the bus to work. We, the city does have a Building Tune Ups Ordinance that is going to be going into effect. It's going to be critical that we have strong oversight onto that. Building emissions are another, you know, our first, our number one is from transportation, but building emissions are a significant portion of our emissions here locally. So we need oversight on council that's going to make sure that we actually hit the metrics in that building ordinance and that we can move forward from that. I also think it's critical that we make sure that we are clear about working with the state. We have resources that do come from a state policy that caps carbon pollution. Talked to lots of folks, we're missing coordination, and if we get better coordination, we can get better access to those dollars.
You don't have to, you can. Okay, we're going to go on to the next question. I appreciate that question, Ms. Bean, on climate justice. A little plug for Rainier Avenue Radio. We do a week-long summit called Earth Deserves More Than a Day. If you walked in, you saw the sign out there. We had over twenty different organizations, individuals, community members talk about this. This is information that doesn't come from me. This comes from the American Lung Association. If you are black, you breathe two times worse air than a white person. If you are brown, you breathe three times worse air than a white person. This is coming from the American Lung Association. So what we try to do during that summit is aware our community of the importance of understanding that environmental justice and climate justice is not icebergs melting in Norway. It impacts your water, it impacts your health, it impacts the air that we are breathing right now. So thank you for that question. Mr. Coto, your question will be directed towards candidate Nelson.
Candidate Nelson, sticking with that theme, tree canopy versus density, Seattle's updated tree rules have coincided with faster removal of mature trees as housing production rises. What specific amendments would you sponsor to balance climate resilience with urgent housing needs? Name two code changes.
One minute, candidate Nelson.
Just some history. When we were looking at the tree ordinance that is in place now, what I noticed is that most of the trees that could be cut down are in single-family homes and also in lesser-dense mixed-use areas. And so we should have gone after protecting those trees instead of focusing on what are we going to do with the commercial residential areas. And so there is, we have got to focus on protecting the trees in single-family homes, but do so with the flexibility of ensuring that we are also building to the capacity that we absolutely need. There are a couple amendments that are, that are trying to strike the balance, but I believe that we can do both. And it's a matter of smart policy and the amendments that will be made to the amendments that are on the table right now.
Candidate Foster, would you like the question repeated?
No, I don't need it repeated. Thank you. You know, tree canopy cover is really important. We have a goal to reach 30% tree canopy cover, and we are not on track, right? And I oftentimes hear this conversation of trees versus development as if it needs to be one or the other, and it absolutely does not. There are lots of things that we can do at the local level, including continuing to ease parking requirements. Sometimes you see develop new development, and the housing takes up part of the lot, but there's a lot of parking. And in some of those places, we could have trees. We could look at our existing tree ordinance that requires three-for-one replacement. There's a place where we could ask developers to do more there. I want to also be clear, we could look at our public lands that the city does have control over, so that we can ensure that whatever tree canopy we have and we invest in, we can protect it for many, many years to come. Speaking of the amendments that are on the table, I've been clear that I do not support the amendments that are coming from Councilmember Rivera, because I believe they would present too much of a challenge for developers to actually build. I've heard you say that you do support those amendments at the last forum that we were at. I think it's critical that we are striking the right balance, but that means that we don't need to make, oh, thank you.
First of all, yeah, yes, I did say I support that. And I continue to look at both of them to, to make sure that there could be possible tweaks to those amendments to, to make sure that they consist better with our need for density. But here's what I will say. I'm sponsoring that parking amendment to, to incentivize stacked flats. So I've got six amendments on the books that are designed to incentivize more affordable housing while also paying attention to our, our tree canopy goals.
Candidate Foster, would you like to use your 30 seconds? Okay, we are going to go to break. Welcome, for those of you who are here and if you just joined in, you're listening to the Seattle City Council Nine Debate, right here on Rainier Avenue, radio powered by the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle. This is one of multiple debates that we'll be hosting. We'll be hosting debates for the Council Position Two tomorrow, right here at 7 o'clock. And then we'll have both of the mayoral candidates here on Thursday for that debate as well. We'll also be hosting debates with King County Executive, with City Council Position Eight, and the City Attorney's Office as well, as well. And also, we'll be talking about a number of different issues. There will be interviews with most of the candidates. We'll be talking with members of the community. We're going to talk about immigration, ICE. I don't know if, is our folks here still from the Community Police Commission? Don't make some noise there. And a four-part series. We just finished series number, show number one, which is a lot about the consent decree and just introducing you to the Community Police Commission, the CPC. There'll be more of that as well. We'll be back, and then we'll get ready to wrap this up and take this on the home drive for the final opportunity, at least here on Rainier Avenue Radio, to hear from candidates for Seattle City Council Position Nine. We'll be back.
Paul Pearson, host of Star Time, and this is my real voice. Honest, you're hearing it on Rainier Avenue Radio World. If you or a family member are 55 or over and need nursing home-level care, but wants to keep living where you are, check out Providence Elder Place Pates. This program offers healthcare, housing, transportation, and recreational activities. There are no copays or deductibles, and it's covered through Medicare and Medicaid. Providence Elder Place Pates works to keep you healthy and in your home. Call 206-320-5325, or visit providence.org/elderplace. Providence.org/elderplace.
Hey, Seattle. Tune into Lidline Sports every Monday, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
What up, yo? We are back. This is Cap, and the man that don't take no mess, Mr. O.P.I.S., Mr. Stevenson. What's day you?
I hope you see the hat that I'm wearing right now. That's how mad I am.
I do. Man, you are angry.
I just want to make that be known. I just want to make that be known.
Tune into Lidline Sports every Monday, 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Lidline Sports.
My name is Bigan. It's a positive career bird, Kawili.
And this is Miles Salvador from Australia.
And I'm Norv Kawili, also known as Norv Cam.
Mr. New pong latest news and events from Philippines. Our local Filipino community, Phil Am Radio.
We play Filipino music and interview guests from all around the world.
And I'll keep you updated on the latest Seahawks and sports news.
Yeah, always tune in. Phil Am Radio every Tuesday, 1:00 to 2:30 PM Pacific Time on Rainier Avenue Radio Network.
And in YouTube and Facebook, salamat po.
Are you in need of new or gently-used clothing? Hope's Community Closet is here to help. We offer a wide range of clothing for men, women, youth, children, and infants. Join us on the fourth Saturday of each month from 12:30 to 4:00 at the Silent Task Force. We're giving clothing with care, community with heart. Lovely ladies lemonade for sale, and shots to the sound of old-school soul. Any questions? Contact Alicia Kennedy, Executive Director of Women United at 206-316-7601. 206-316-7601. Come and find the perfect outfit for you and your family. We look forward to seeing you there.
Welcome back. Rainier Avenue Radio World. It's me, Tony D. I am your host tonight for this Seattle City Council Position Nine Debate. This debate features one of the most important races in our city. It's citywide, and this person elected will represent all of Seattle and help make decisions that impact, as you can tell, some of the conversations that we're having now, housing, public safety, transportation, climate, and just the overall direction of our community. Our moderators are Gina Bing, owner of the Health Discovery, active puncture, and yoga business, small business owner. And then also, yeah, Ronald Claus. Why not? This is here to, um, probably help all of us get more answers as to where our candidates stand on some of the issues. And Mr. Juan Coto, who is the Governor, Government Affairs Director for Blood Works Northwest, and then also hosts a show on Rainier Avenue called Juan on Rainier, where he speaks with a lot of the candidates when speaking on issues. And some of those interviews are, most of them, all of them are going to air during the 31 days of Community Election Connection. We're going to get back to this conversation here. And we'll start with Ms. Coto. And if you would initially direct your question to candidate Foster, we're going to get this rolling again. Thank you for coming, and here we go.
Talking about governance and representation, the mandate from the primary, progressive challengers led widely in August. How will you interpret the primary elected, how will you interpret the primary electorate's message? And what's one position you will reconsider based on that mandate?
Candidate Foster, one minute.
So I think that what's coming from the electorate, you know, not just in the primary election results, but frankly, every day when I'm talking to people, whether it's on doors or at the farmer's market or in whatever place, is that people want a few things. They want to be clear that their government is focused on local issues of affordability, safety, housing. I think as I talk to people and share the message around my vision for that, that definitely resonates. So I think that's one thing I take from that election results. I think that in terms of a position that I am considering changing, I don't have one. I think, you know, as I continue to engage with voters, I've been very clear that I want us to have public safety. I also want us to deliver on what I call, you know, community safety and traffic safety, thinking about walking, like, you know, our entire system and how it works comprehensively together. So I think voters are really clear that they are ready for somebody who's got a diversity of experience, or somebody who's got strong progressive values, and for somebody who's going to govern collaboratively and effectively.
Candidate Foster, would you like to question?
No, it's okay. All right. So I took this, the, the primary results very seriously and with humility. I also recognize that in the 2023 elections of the, of the candidates, the people that ended up getting elected, except for Dan Strauss, actually came in second. So I'm not taking the primary results as a done deal, but I am learning from them to find out what people, what really resonates with people. And so, yes, housing affordability. I'll note that the, that my candidate, that my opponent voted against workforce housing in the stadium district. So for me, it's about drawing the contrast between my, my opponent and, and the things that I've done and planned to do. That is one thing. But we never stop listening to the people of Seattle. And it is very possible that my mind could be changed on a position through further conversations, and that's the kind of leader that you need.
Candidate Foster, would you like to?
Yeah, The Stranger just released an article, maybe an hour before we walked in here today, that it's not the community, it's consultants. Consultants who are advising you to point me at somebody who is inexperienced, which I am not, consultants who are telling you to step up your rhetoric on defending against Trump, not your actions on defending against Trump. So it's really hard for me to take that as a genuine comment about listening to voters when it's clear that it is not listening to voters. It's a pivot that's designed to, to change your image in the general election.
It's unfortunate that we have to talk about consultants, because we both have consultants. There was an article in the paper about the consultant, that your consultant's access to insider information that's policy-oriented, and he's, you know, representing many different clients, including you and the mayor. So let's just talk about what we are actually saying, because consultants give advice, but we don't necessarily follow it. At least I don't. I filter what I'm told through the lens of what I'm hearing and where my heart is.
Move on to the next question. Jenna, next question, your question will initially be directed toward candidate Foster.
So on a policy level, what do you see as the biggest failure of the current council? And how would you do things differently?
Candidate Foster, one minute.
I would say overall, it is the idea that there are several policies that this council has passed that have had a lot of promise and a lot of messaging and a lot of rhetoric that has not held up to the evidence that the council was hearing prior to passing those policies, and has not held up to outcomes that we are seeing on the street and in real life. I think that applies to policies like banishment zones, like soap and soda, which are clear that they were going to be ineffective prior to the council going backwards and passing something that we had already moved away from. I think that, for me, what I want to bring to council is an experience that is rooted in both my personal experience, the fact that I have a master's degree in social work, and the fact that I want to deliver on being evidence-based and balanced as a council member.
I have, sure. I often have to remind people on the campaign trail that council passes the laws, including a budget, and it's up to the executive to implement. So I am not the boss of the police, and to the extent that our soda and soap laws are not being implemented, that is something on the executive side. We are providing more tools to deal with sex trafficking, drug dealing, and, and the persistence problems that we see downtown that are making on people, that are making people unsafe. I believe we have more tool, we need more tools than not less, and the jury should be looking at the implementation of what the laws are that council is passing, and whether or not, you know, arrests are made at a certain level, you know, that, that shows there's making a difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, again, sure, absolutely. I'm very clear on what the role of the council is versus the role of the mayor versus the role of the city, city attorney. But it was also really clear at the time that council was debating this policy, that there were flaws in the approach. There were experts who came and testified. It was really clear that there was a reason the city moved away from this, because it is not an effective way to get people housing, to get people treatment. It is an effective way to ban people from being in one part of the city, which is not the way that we solve our problems comprehensively.
Look, either we do nothing, or we try new things. And soda and soap are an attempt to interrupt the marketplaces that are driving the exploitation of young girls and women on Aurora. It's, it's, it's an attempt to interrupt the, the drug dealing and the public use and the, and the harm that is being caused to the people that are involved in, in that situation. And so, yeah, let's put out other tools, see if they work. But if they don't, we move on to other things. But we can't just sit around and say, we're good.
Ms. Coto, next question, your question will initially be directed to candidate Nelson.
Candidate Nelson, name one concrete deal or opportunity you will pursue in your first six months, that you will interact with the county, port, or state that unlocks a key objective, and what will you trade to get it?
One minute.
We still need to look at more growth within the areas surrounding our, our industrial zones. And I do know that there are plans that are talked about right there, because we need more housing everywhere, and we have to, we have to be careful about where we put it. But again, my big focus going forward is advancing a concrete, comprehensive plan to deal with addiction. We have bits and pieces of, of programs here and there, but until we tie it all together, so that we're really helping people recover as broadly as you want to define recovery, and that will end up solving a lot of the other issues that, that are troubling the port, the county, and the city of Seattle.
Oh, I just get to answer now, right?
Oh, sorry. Would you like the question repeated?
No, thank you. You know, the, the first place that I would go to in terms of collaboration with county, port, or state, is looking at coordination of our gun violence prevention programs. So there was a report that came out from the city auditor that looked at the city's gun violence prevention programs. And one of the recommendations was to make sure that we are coordinating closely and getting access to the data from the King County Office of Gun Violence Prevention. I may have that office one or two words off, but yeah, okay, thank you. And so I think it's really important that we are working on making sure that we're improving the data and the coordination between the city and the county so that we can actually make real progress on gun violence prevention. We know that shots fired are higher here in District Two than any of the other districts in the city. And it's important that we are bringing a comprehensive and a collaborative approach to solving the challenges that we have.
I sponsored that audit on gun violence, because I knew that we could be doing better, and we were given a list of, of interventions that we need to do that, that call for partnering with our federal agencies. And I am pushing the executive to in fact do that. Yes, that's our role as a council oversight body, is we have to ask for the information and then make sure that it's being implemented.
Candidate Foster, would you like to future 30 seconds?
Yeah, I want to correct the record on this. Actually, if you look back, I believe it was in 2023, that Councilmember Lisa Herbold passed a statement of legislative intent that actually asked for the auditor to do a report. When you got on council, you passed an ordinance that canceled several of the previous statements of legislative intent from the council. That was one of the things that was then canceled. So then, yes, you had to go back and request a second report. We could have had that report sooner if it was not for that action on your behalf.
Jenna, next question, and your question will initially be to candidate Nelson.
Um, the world has changed. The world is changing really fast. We have the federal government and just AI and everything that's happening as quickly as it is. In one sentence, what is your vision for Seattle in 10 years?
In one sentence? Wow, okay. All right. One, Candidate Nelson, in one sentence?
Feel free to expound upon that sentence.
My sentence is that we have got so many amazing, beautiful things happening in the city of Seattle. I need to pull my own head up and recognize that and, and learn how to advance those good things. I would start with helping small businesses stay in the city that, that allows our jobs to stay here and, and allows our city to be unique. But mostly it is reversing some of the failed policies of the past and always have a vision for where we can go further. The waterfront park is an example of the, of the greatness the city can become. And more of that, please.
Candidate Foster, would you like the question repeated? All right, go 10 seconds. I mean, not 10 seconds. What did you say? One sentence?
With the expanding.
Yeah, I love this question. Thank you. You know, I want Seattle to be a city that is diverse, that is safe, that is affordable, and that is thriving. That is the vision. That has to be what we are all working towards. I think that we can start, you know, if I'm imagining, we've, we've passed the BNO tax that's on the ballot so that small businesses do get relief. I've talked to small business owners who are so excited about the tax break that they are going to, they are going to receive from this policy. We are a city that is adequately investing in our services from housing to treatment. We are a city that has actually made good on our promise for social housing so that we have places that people can live where they are paying 30% of their income and we don't have so many more rent burdened folks in our city. You know, my vision is that we are a Seattle that is united. We are increasingly becoming sort of, you know, two cities, right? Black median income in the city is, I want to say $70,000 lower than the highest, the highest households. I want to see a city where we address that and we tackle it head on.
I, I 100% disagree that we are investing adequate in, in investments in, in addiction treatment. So we'll have to discuss that off, off, off the mark. But, you know, it's easy to look at what the vision is for Seattle, but it's much harder to think about the policies that will get us there. And it's not easy to figure out those policies. And it requires somebody who is in the minutia all the time and talking to as many people and who can correct the record. I think that you're confusing statements of legislative intent with audits because it's not the same thing.
And Candidate Foster, would you like to use your 30 seconds?
Just briefly to clarify, I didn't say that we are currently investing enough. I was stating a vision for the future, which was the question. So I wasn't saying we're doing enough right now. I was just saying that's the vision that I have for 10, 10 years, 20 years, yeah.
Okay. The, the two folks who had questions, if you would come up here and have a question, if you have a statement, don't come up here. If you're going to attack one of the candidates, don't come up here. But if you have a question, come up here, all right? And be right here. So I have a question. I have a question from a conversation that we just had earlier about with the Community Police Commission. And, and that was something that they brought up about a, the city hall meeting and, and then vote 7 to 2 surveillance. And although they had over 120 calls, they said, no, we don't want surveillance. So I guess the question is for, for you, Candidate Foster, how would you have voted? And then for you, Council President Nelson, how did you vote? And do you feel like you were listening to the will of the people? And so I'll start with you, Candidate Foster, on that issue of surveillance. How would you have voted?
Thank you for this question. So, you know, and the day after that vote, a report came out that showed that, or not a report, excuse me, a request came from the Trump administration to the state to hand over information from the Department of Licensing. And the state is now dealing with that request. I was clear before that vote that I would not have voted. I would have been in the minority. I would have been, I guess it would have been 6 to 3. You know, I'm definitely concerned. I believe we need to work on our local public safety. But it's also important that we are very clear about the threat of the federal government. We've seen that the federal government has come in and gotten access to information that they were not supposed to have. Now, yes, there were things that were done. I think it was really important, the legis, or excuse me, the amendment that Councilmember Kettle and I believe Councilmember Rink sponsored that states that if there is, if it's identified that the federal government is intervening, that they would pull the plug on their surveillance for at least 60 days. So I think there are smart backstops that I'm, I'm happy that were passed through the amendments, but I would not have supported that ordinance.
And Foster, Nelson, your vote on that issue? And do you feel like you went against the will of the people? Or maybe you don't feel that way? I don't know.
I voted for the two pieces of legislation because what we did was we brought, because progressive cities across the country are doing that same thing. They're taking advantage of technology. And the RTC, which is, is what, what, what this center was about is where the video is brought together and they are not monitored all the time. They are triggered when there is an emergency or when there's a life-threatening situation so that officers can get to different places sooner. That is safety. That is basic public safety. But it was really Councilmember Mar, Juarez, who had the mic drop when she looked out at the, the audience and said, you all are worried about a data breach, a hypothetical data breach. I'm worried about my people dying. And that is the same thing that Councilmember Maritza Rivera said and Joy Hollingsworth. And so I do think that we have to privilege the people who belong to, who represent or closer to the communities that are calling for more safety and privilege that voice.
And, and Councilmember Foster, you said you would have voted, excuse me, yeah, you said you would have voted no? And do you want to rebut? Are you good?
No, I don't.
Okay, we'll move on. Tell me what your name is. I, I see you have a Deion Foster sticker on. Ask your question. And it'll be for both candidates. Like I said, I'm just saying this is how we get on. Don't want to tap either of the candidates and just ask questions. And tell us what your name is first.
My name is Jay Weaver and I'm West Seattle resident. Thank you, Ms. Nelson and Ms. Foster for taking this question. I'm going to give you another crack at public safety and immigration. And it kind of ties into that question. As a son of an immigrant, a gay man, and someone who loves this city, I believe public safety for Black, Brown, LGBTQ+ IA and immigrant protections are all connected. With the city council's recent 72 vote, including Councilmember Nelson's support to align with the Trump-era demands that could weaken Seattle's sanctuary city status, how will you ensure our immigrant communities remain safe, welcome, and protected while also addressing the broader concerns of public, public safety across Seattle? In the face of federal pressure, what concrete steps would you take to balance these priorities without compromising our values as a sanctuary city?
Candidate Nelson.
Again, this is getting, okay, this is, I am not saying that that is not an important question, but I will, I will take the answers that, the people that have a more legitimate position to answer. And here's the thing. We do have guidelines and rules and, and at the, at the state and city level for what kinds of information we turn over. We're talking about a hypothetical data breach. Very well could happen. But I am focused on the people that are dying, that are getting robbed, that are getting broken into around the, around the city, the, the students that are getting shot around, right near, around Garfield High. And I do have to prioritize the life and death situations that the, that the video feed, which a lot of other cities employ, will help solve and perhaps deter. I had taken oath to protect the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Seattle. And that is in, in, I've got to keep on doing that.
Candidate Foster, one minute.
Yeah, I believe the question was, you know, what we'll do to try to help make community safer and improve collaboration at this moment. I'm really proud to have the sole endorsement of One America Votes, which is the state's largest immigrant rights organization. And I'm excited to be able to collaborate with them if I'm elected to council. As I've been talking to folks, and actually as I've been out in community, I was at a safety meeting in New Holly over the summer that was organized by some folks who live there. And there was SPD officers. And one of the things that really struck me was actually how empty the room was. A lot of people didn't show up. And I asked one of the organizers about it and she was like, people are really afraid to come out to things right now and are struggling to make sure that they can understand the difference between what SPD is doing and what ICE is doing. And I heard that echoed in some of the sentiments when I, when I reached out to community leaders recently. So I think there's more that we can do. The CPC was up here talking about the Before the Badge program. I think we could look at ways to expand that and deepen the relationships so that immigrant communities, LGBTQ+, and many others, understand what's local and what's federal.
Candidate Nelson, would you like to rebut? Are you good?
Yeah, I think.
30 seconds.
It really also requires talking to the people in these communities that are immigrants and asking them individually, not the nonprofit chair or whatever, but the people who are concerned about safety. And offline, we can talk about who those people are that you have spoken with because I'm, I am talking to my constituents on the ground. And overwhelmingly, even if they have got, even if they're immigrant or have families that are so, they're focused on public safety first and foremost.
Candidate Foster, would you like to rebut?
I guess I'll just clarify that, oh, sure. I guess I'll just clarify that I was speaking at both a community neighborhood level and an organization level, which I believe I referenced in my comments.
Just tell the folks who you are and then initially direct your question to Candidate Foster.
Juan, thank you both for, for just taking a dedication to, to run even during this climate. But the question I have, and just for the record, I'm asking this as a personal voter. This does have nothing to do with any of the jobs that I work at, affiliation, okay? My name is Deontay, my name is Deontay Dampf. And the question that I have is, we know that the governor signed a document earlier this year stating that this is a safe and sanctuary city for LGBTQ folks. We know that the mayor signed the same, the same call to action, right? Can you explain? And, and we, when, when I think about safe and sanctuary city for LGBTQ community members, I also think about the most marginalized of that community, which are Black trans community, are Black trans community members. The question to both of you is, have you worked? Oh, have you, what is your thoughts on safe and sanctuary cities? And have you worked with any Black trans-led organizations out here on what we can do to keep our communities safe? Thank you.
Candidate Foster.
Thank you for that question. I mean, as a Black queer person, I think about this myself. I guess I'll actually start with just giving some credit to Councilmember Hollingworth because I don't think she got enough when her, I mean, I believe it was her that helped really negotiate and make sure that that protest, if you can call it that, was moved out of the Gaborhood, moved out of Capitol Hill, moved over into Gasworks. I think that was really important leadership. And I just didn't see enough people lifting her up for that leadership. I, yeah, yeah. I, I have worked with Black trans-led organizations. I, on the day of that protest, I went to the Louder Than Hate. I saw you there, I think. I went to the Louder Than Hate protest to make sure that I was just with people and hearing how they were responding and, and just trying to show up and be present. I often, and what I heard, you know, from folks in that space is they do want that. They want to make sure that council members are going to be reaching out, asking how new policy is going to impact them. Oh, and yes, absolutely, I do support safe and sanctuary cities. I think that was the other part of your question. Thank you.
And Candidate Nelson.
So I sponsored the, the legislation that conforms to state law, the S.H.I.E.L.D. law that protects people seeking gender-affirming care and reproductive care. I established the, the, the committee that is looking at the potential threats of the, of the Trump administration. And I am constantly asking organizations that do represent these, these, these communities, what more the city can do. Spoken for a very long time with the, with the Director of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. That is something that a lot of my candidate colleagues haven't done. And so I am talking to the people that know, that are really keen on the problems. What are the existing loopholes in our laws and how we can fix them? And I have done a couple pieces of legislation to that effect.
Would you like to rebut? Candidate Foster?
Yeah, speaking, I was just, you know, elevating another council member. I suppose I'll just take a moment to opportu, excuse me, take a moment to lift up the work of Councilmember Alexis Mercedes-Rink, who chairs the Committee on Federal Oversight and who, yeah, absolutely. And, and who requested that that committee was stood up. Absolutely, it is the role of a council president to then respond to that request and stand up the committee. But it was her leadership that ensured that we got that committee stood up in the first place.
Candidate Nelson, would you like to use your 30 seconds for rebut?
Yeah, I just, that, and I was surprised when Councilmember Alexis Rink put in a, a trigger clause to the legislation that would have conformed to state law on the S.H.I.E.L.D., the S.H.I.E.L.D. law, because we needed that help right now. So there might be some differences of opinion amongst us, but I think that you will see this whole council focused on not only protecting our city against, against Trump, but helping the, helping advance policies that will provide an edge, a hedge against the potential cuts to federal cuts that you're likely to have.
And we're going to have one more audience question. Just tell us your name and then your question.
My name is David. And can I ask both questions or just one?
One question.
Okay. Okay, the candidate that I want to ask a question was, since Sarah opened up with the addiction piece, I just wanted to know regarding addiction treatment, what would you do differently than what is already being proposed by Sarah Nelson? Because I haven't, through the whole debate, I haven't seen, are you guys on the same page? Are you guys on the same page with that? This question is for the distinguished guest here.
And you ask cool on a question. A question initially directed towards you, candidate Foster.
Yeah, thank you, David. So I think addiction treatment is incredibly important, and it has to be part of our response to public safety. You know, the council is, or Councilmember Nelson can speak herself, but I know that there is a proposal that we would, you know, take 25% of our recent, of a potential sales tax increase and dedicate that to treatment. I think that is an important step forward. For me, I think it's a, I believe really deeply in permanent supportive housing being part of the way that we're thinking about treatment. I definitely am somebody who believes in meeting people where they're at and not leaving them there. My assumption is that the difference between us is probably going to be around the role that abstinence-based treatment has in our treatment system. I think, and the data shows us that that does work for some people, but it doesn't work for everyone. And we just need to be really data-driven when we're looking at this. And, you know, part of treatment, unfortunately, is many folks do relapse, and so I want to make sure that as we're making investments in our treatment systems, that we're doing so in a way that's going to match the challenges that we have. Thanks, David.
And candidate Nelson.
I support increased investment and increased attention to recovery. Recovery is defined not just as abstinence, it's defined as helping people get their lives back together, reconnect with their family, and be able to live with dignity and potentially the ability to support themselves. That is recovery, and that is the treatment that I am looking to advance, to spend more on. It can be opioid use disorder medication. It can be, you know, inpatient treatment where you can't do anything, but the point is that we have not focused nearly enough on this issue, given the issues that it drives, public safety, et cetera. And so that is my fight right now.
Candidate Foster, would you like to rebut? All right, then we're going to move on. I'm going to give our opportunity for each of our, nope. Candidate, our moderator, again, you're listening to Rainier Avenue Radio World, and this is our Community Election Connection. This is the Council Nine Debate. This is a citywide position that represents the entire city. So all of the things that are being discussed today throughout the city, this position is supposed to represent all of them. Your job as a voter is to say, who aligns with what I would like? Or who do I want to be in the position to make these decisions on behalf of my schooling, of my housing, of my environment? That's what you do. That's why we're doing this. One question from each of you, and then we're going to give an opportunity for final words. So Jenna, one question from you, your final question.
Okay. So assume you get elected. What is the first bill you would introduce?
And that question goes to candidate Nelson. One minute.
I would introduce the legislation to allocate the money that I've allocated to treatment, but get it into permanent supportive housing and get it to our partners that are already working in this space but that want more resources.
Candidate Foster.
Yeah. I would introduce legislation to pass a local capital gains tax. We have a really significant budget shortfall. It's fluctuating a little bit. The BNO tax, if passed this fall, can close a portion of it, but it won't close all of it. And I think we need to make sure that we have sufficient local revenue to get through the next four years, particularly given the potential budget cuts that we'll face.
And candidate Nelson, do you have a rebut?
Yeah, you know, I hear a lot of people talking about progressive revenue, but what really matters is the results that the revenue is generating. That is key. We don't just say, we need more money. We have to say, what do we need money for? And how will it be spent? And what are the improvements that we're looking to see? I am not opposed to additional taxes. I have voted for them, but we really have to know what we're spending it on and why that would be better than what we're doing right now.
Candidate Foster.
Yeah, I suppose I would just uplift that last year, Councilmember Moore did introduce legislation for a local capital gains, oh, excuse me, a local capital gains tax, which you did not support. And that local capital gains tax would have invested in a number of things, including food services. So there has been proposals that have moved forward that have had clear attachments and clear spending priorities that you have not supported.
All right. Mr. Coto, this will be the last moderator question, the last question of this debate, number first in this year's Community Election Connection. Mr. Coto.
Democracy vouchers 2.0. Voters just weighed renewal of the democracy vouchers. Should the program be modified? Example, higher individual voucher amounts? Should the usability changes? Or stronger disclosure rules to improve participation?
Candidate Nelson, one minute.
I don't believe that council has the ability to significantly modify the, there are certain things one can change and one not. One thing that is interesting is that my opponent can get the free vouchers, but as soon as the limit is raised, either by me personally, my campaign, or a campaign that's working on my behalf, then she can do, you know, access the additional money. But what is most important is it engages people and it gets people to be able, you asked me about the potential differences, that's why I said that. This has generated engagement in local politics, and that is what I think that we need to foster. It gives people a reason to pay attention and then to give.
Candidate Foster.
Couple things that I'd like to be clear about. Every single member of the current city council besides my opponent was elected using democracy vouchers. My opponent has run for office three times and each time has declined to participate in the public financing program. My opponent has just mentioned, it's interesting that I'm allowed to raise more money. Well, here's the thing, when you participate in the program and everybody participates, there are spending caps on the races. When you opt not to participate, as my opponent has opted not to participate, those spending caps go away. My opponent raised almost the amount for the general election by the time of the primary election. So let's be really clear about this. If there's anything to fix, it's to make sure that it is fair when people like me choose to participate in a program that allows everybody to participate in being a donor and they run against somebody who chooses not to participate in the program. So I just find it very disingenuous that you would hint that I somehow have an advantage here when you chose not to participate in the program and spend almost twice as much in the primary election.
You have 30 seconds for rebut.
A little bit has to do with time. What voters don't, what people don't understand is that you have to gather 400 signatures and 400 small donations just to be able to access the democracy vouchers. I'm just giving you, practically speaking, it's hard with the time constraints that I had, and also there are some problems I have heard about having some surety about when you're going to get the money. So I chose not to deal with some of those things that I thought would be barriers because I just needed to hit the ground running.
Candidate Foster, use your 30 seconds for rebut.
Every other candidate running for office right now is participating in this program. Every other candidate qualified for this program. Every other candidate is working through what my opponent has mentioned. We are all figuring it out and running strong campaigns.
All right. Here we go. The venue's big debate. It is now time for a closing statement. Candidate Nelson, you will have two minutes in your closing statement to use it for your purposes, but this is your opportunity to be convinced not only those who are here, but those who are streaming the service, those who are watching on our social media or other affiliate stations. This, again, is debate for Seattle, city council position number nine, a very important position, a citywide position, and our current Seattle City Council President and candidate for Council Nine position, Sarah Nelson, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
I've been looking forward to this event because I, we're just getting to be able to get to know on a more intimate basis what our ideas are. And I don't know about you, but I still can't tell what precisely my opponent would do that's significantly different than what I'm doing and why it would be better. And so, you know, besides the call for progressive revenue, I still don't quite hear it, but maybe that will become more apparent. I am, as I said, not opposed to raising taxes, done that, but it matters how we're spending money. So it's always going to be a focus on accountability for me. And she can attack my record, as she has done in different venues, but at least I have a record. At least I have a record because I've got experience being a council member. You know what you're getting, and the record that I've got has been endorsed by the Seattle Times, the firefighters, the amalgamated transit unions, the building trades unions that have built this city across the country, many nonprofit and community leaders, six council members, Adam Smith, former governors, Greg Warren Locke, and a whole bunch of other Democrat, former and current elected leaders. So just go to my website and see the support that I have, and thank you very much for engaging. I really hope that everybody tells a friend to get involved in this election and voting in November.
And candidate Foster, same deal. You have two minutes for your closing statement that you could share with our audience, who's not only here, but our audience, which is more of us who is listening and watching socials and streaming. Candidate Foster, you have two minutes.
Yeah. Well, first, thank you so much for hosting us, and thank you for moderating, and thank you for spending your night with us in person or online. You know, I will say I'm disappointed to hear that recap from my opponent because I believe we've touched on our differences tonight, and I look forward to continuing to do that over the course of the campaign. I am incredibly proud of the campaign that I am running. I am proud to have the support of Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal, of MLK Labor. I'm proud to have the support of dozens of local elected leaders who have been really clear that they are putting their faith and their trust in me to lead our city. Running as a first-time candidate is challenging. Taking on an incumbent is challenging, and it says something when people are willing to put their trust in a challenger. And what it says is that we are ready for a change. We are ready for somebody who is going to fight for local policies and priorities. We are ready for somebody who can walk and chew gum at the same time when it comes to making sure that we have SPD officers and accountability. We are ready for somebody who would have voted on council in support of our crisis care centers, which my opponent abstained from doing. And I want to be clear that when I call these out, it's about making sure that I am clear about what I would have done on council and what I will do if I am elected as your next city council member. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, you have, that is our first debate on today, the opening day of the Community Election Connection. I want to thank a few people, the folks at Rainier Avenue Radio. Give them a round of applause. And hop out of that applause, timekeeper. It's not an easy job. And a round of applause for our moderators, Genevieve and Juan Coto. And a round of applause for our two candidates who are running for the position of Seattle Thank you for joining for this kickoff debate. Again, we'll have debates coming up tomorrow at 7 o'clock, right here on this very same stage at the historic Columbia City Theater. That will be for council position number two, Eddie Lynn and Donna Stuckford. Then on Thursday, we'll have the mayoral debate right here on this very stage with incumbent Mayor Bruce, Seattle Mayor Bruce Harrell, and Katie Wilson. That will be here as well. Again, we'll be having debates also in October with King County Executive, the Seattle City Council position eight, and with the City Attorney's Office right here on this very stage. I'll just share some information with you. This 110-year-old building in South Seattle has had so much history, the likes of Jimi Hendrix and Quincy Jones and Ray Charles and Duke Ellington have performed here as well. And now we have hosted several different community events in this building. This building is just a fixture for what it has been. Thank you for coming. My name is Tony B., and that's going to do it. We will continue our series again on the 20th, 25th, with the Community Police Commission. We'll be discussing chronic nuisance, and thanks to, again, the Community Police Commission for sponsoring that entire series. I don't know how we're going to do that in four shows, but we're going to try to figure it out. We'll also be talking about immigration, ICE, health, public safety, a lot of other issues. And thank you for coming because that's what it's all about. Thank you. Goodnight.